We will call the meeting to order.
Welcome to Nixa City Hall. This video is going to provide you with an overview of how the city of Nixa conducts city council meetings. We encourage everyone to attend and participate in city council meetings. This is part of how democracy works at the local level. Listening to the perspectives of subject matter experts, city residents, and other community members helps our elected leaders make more informed decisions. Before we start the meeting, let's review some of council's rules of order. These rules help us make sure our meetings are orderly and efficient while protecting the ability of everyone to have an opportunity to speak. Please be respectful of the person speaking and hold your own comments until it is your turn to speak. Presenters are invited by the council to provide information during the meeting to the council. These are informational presentations only, and nothing will be voted on at the time of the presentation. Presenters are not time limited. There are two times when all other visitors will be able to speak to council. The first is during the visitor's section of the agenda, and the second is during any public hearing regarding an agenda item. During the visitor's section, anyone may speak to council about any topic, whereas the public hearings regarding specific agenda items allow you to make comments for council to consider before they make a decision on that topic. Whether you wish to speak during any public hearing or the visitor's section, the following rules of order will apply. One, only one person should speak at a time. Be respectful of the person speaking and wait to speak until it is your turn. Two, anyone speaking must do so from the podium and speak into the microphone. Three, you must first state your name and provide your address in writing to the city clerk before beginning your comments. Four, all speakers will be given five minutes to make their comments to the council. The mayor or council may have additional questions for speakers after this five-minute period. Five, all comments should be addressed to the mayor and council. Six, if you have questions about existing city processes, programs, or policies, or if you need assistance from staff on any issue, please contact City Hall during normal business hours, and we'll be happy to assist you or answer any questions you may have at that time. The public hearing is designed to provide the public an opportunity to provide testimony and information to the mayor and council regarding the decisions they may be considering. Keep in mind, this meeting will be recorded and livestreamed with video and audio. Therefore, all comments relevant to this meeting must be spoken into a microphone; otherwise, video viewers will not be able to hear you. In the case of a closed session or technical difficulties, some meetings or portions of meetings may not actually be recorded or streamed. The use of cell phones during council meetings is discouraged, so please silence all devices now. Thank you for watching, and thank you for engaging with the city of Nixa. The meeting will begin shortly.
Seth Balog.
Here.
Sean Lucas.
Here.
Jared Giddens.
Here.
Aaron Peterson.
Here.
Darlene Graham.
Here.
Matt Ogden.
Here.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will move on to our proclamation section. This week's proclamation is for National Library Week, which will be the 23rd through the 29th of April. So whereas libraries are the heart of their cities, towns, and schools, fostering a sense of belonging, whereas libraries' services and resources extend far beyond the walls of their buildings, and whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the communities they serve and ensure equity of access for all, and whereas libraries create trusted, safe spaces where people can come together to learn, grow, and explore ideas, and whereas libraries spark curiosity by motivating individuals to explore their world in new ways through technology, programs, and services, and whereas to adapt to the changing world, libraries are expanding their resources and continuing to meet the needs of their patrons, and whereas the city of Nixa encourages all residents to explore the services and programs our library has to offer, and whereas libraries and library workers join library supporters and advocates across the community and nation to celebrate National Library Week, therefore, I, Brian Steele, Mayor for the city of Nixa, do hereby proclaim April 23rd through the 29th as National Library Week. We have Tori and Brandon from the library.
Thank you, I'm Brandon. Can you hear me? Okay, I'm Brandon Jason. I'm the manager here at the Nixa branch. So, when you think of the library, chances are you envision rows of shelves bursting with books, but there's even more to libraries than that. National Library Week is recognized annually by the American Library Association to highlight the positive impact of libraries, and we want to make sure everyone knows the full story. Christian County Library has grown into a multi-branch system, with the Nixa Community Branch celebrating five years of operation next month. Those books I mentioned remain a solid foundation for diversified resources and services, allowing the library to build community for all through access, innovation, and engagement. So first, library support. Access to information is a key tenet of librarianship. Through the Nixa branch, you have access to thousands of materials, including movies, bakeware, Wi-Fi hotspots, tax forms, musical instruments, language learning tools, board games, magazines, newspapers, test prep guides, seeds for gardening, and even books. Digital access especially has expanded, increasing from 53,000 digital checkouts in 2018 to 94,000 in 2022, which is a 56% height. And since opening in 2018, the Nixa branch has accounted for the highest overall library attendance in Christian County. Forty-three percent of library users come to us for their information needs, to use one of our four meeting spaces, attend a wide variety of programs, and access free internet. Some even come to vote, since we became a polling location a couple of years ago. Second, libraries innovate. It's not enough to add resources to the library collection and leave them to be discovered. Christian County Library innovates for our community in numerous ways. Take our new room booking software, which provides a user-friendly method of reserving those aforementioned meeting spaces. We went from 438 meeting room bookings at the Nixa branch in 2021 to over 1,900 bookings in 2022, so that's 4.5 times as many. Innovation comes by understanding what our community needs most. So for example, recent statistics show that more patrons use the public access computers at the Nixa branch than at any other library in the county, at 44%. Using that information, we were rewarded a $25,000 grant from the Missouri State Library to replace our existing bank of computers with new models, increase the number of computers available from nine to 12, replace frontline staff computers, and provide an easier-to-use TV monitor in the largest meeting room. Once this technology is implemented, more people will be able to access the internet for their needs, and staff will be able to assist patrons more efficiently. So libraries build community. Sociologist Ray Oldenburg coined the term "third place", which refers to those points in a community that are not someone's workplace or home. Third places allow for people to meet each other, share ideas, and have fun. The Nixa branch library is such a third place. We build community through a plethora of programs and opportunities that bring people together. In 2022, the Nixa branch averaged around four programs in every five-day span, with nearly 4,000 people attending that year. Our community is increasingly diverse, and staff are dedicated to offering something for everyone: weekly storytimes where parents and kids can connect, monthly book clubs at local coffee shops for people to share in their love of reading, arts and crafts to foster creativity, small business development seminars to strengthen local economic development, advisory boards for tweens and teens to make new friends, and mobility courses for seniors navigating life transitions. What else? Writing courses with published authors, film viewings and discussions, rocket launching experiments, escape rooms, local and state history presentations, interviews with experts on important topics, art exhibitions, yoga classes, English as a second language courses, and even outdoor concerts in our parking lot. These and more have all happened at your Nixa branch library, and they're often the product of partnerships with people right here in the area. So finally, libraries are good. Libraries, as you've heard, make valuable contributions to communities. The latest U.S. census shows that a third of Missouri's population growth is happening in Green and Christian counties, and the American Library Association has found that people equate living near public libraries with enhanced quality of life. The Nixa branch is a place for all people to put aside their differences and meet on the same page. The staff are here for you all, eager to help. So thank you, Mayor Steele and council, for your proclamation, and to the city of Nixa for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jason. Thanks for everything that you and your team do over there. You guys have one of the greatest things, I think, that's ever happened in Nixa in the last several years, is the creation of the library. I think it's something that's really going to be great moving forward as well. All right, we'll move on to our visitor's section.
Ron Sanders.
It's the last time there, Mayor Steele, I think, right? We do the swearing-in at the next meeting?
Correct.
Congratulations. My name is Ron Sanders. I won't do it this time. And tonight, I'd like to talk about being untouchable. As you know, that all three propositions to change our home charter have passed, making it, I don't know, I think it's around 10 times harder to recall any of the people standing in front of me. We went from a percentage of votes cast to the percentage of voters, you know, counted in that precinct, or in that district, or for the mayor, it's all the voters here. So 10% went from, well, let's say, you guys got it like 980 votes. So in the old standard, it would take 98 petition signatures to start something. Now, it would take closer to 600 for a city council member. So even though you got 900 votes, it's going to take 600 signatures just to start the process to remove somebody in a city council member position. When it comes to the mayor, I think our new mayor, Mayor Giddens, soon-to-be, is like 2,400 or 2,700 or something like that, but now-
1,812, Mr. Sanders, 1,812.
Okay.
No, there's 18,119 registered voters as of this election.
Okay. So it will take 1,812. There we go, we're back to that 2/3 again. About 2/3 of the people that voted for you will have to sign before the new mayor will be able to be recalled. It's quite an uphill proposition for any citizens that would want to remove anybody here. So I think that this city council will no longer really belong to the citizens, and I think that eventually, a political machine may rise up and just take its place, because any city council member here can step on about, I don't know, 400 or 500 people's toes before they're really in any danger. Maybe a little bit more. And the mayor, heck, the mayor could push it to 1,500 people, really make 1,500 people angry before you could really get any momentum going. That's quite a feat to do anything like that within 90 days. You really, really have to make people angry. I believe there's only two people speaking tonight, maybe three. The average is one in the past two years that I've been coming up here to talk. People don't come here unless there's something directly affecting their lives. So you guys can vote yourself in raises. Nobody will pay attention. Raise up the electricity rates a couple cents to offset that. People won't really notice that much right off the bat. They'll notice two or three months down the line, but those raises will already happen. I will mention two cases. The Battle of Athens Tennessee, when in 1946, there was an actual physical altercation at the ballot, where there was a political machine that tried to control the outcome of elections. I don't think that we have any problems with that anymore, but it has happened in our past. And more recently, in the 1990s, a place called Bell, California, where city council members went from about $20,000 a year up to $60,000, $70,000 a year, within one year of them electing their friends. And the mayor and the city administrator, I think they were in the $200,000 range. It took the citizens two years of fighting that machine before they finally got their city back, because the first thing that they did was change the standards for the recall. But the people voted for it, and the people are going to end up getting whatever they voted for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders.
Sir Inves. Jack Carnes.
Good evening, council. Jack Carnes, resident of Nixa, Missouri. I had something written down, but it's, what I have to say isn't even worth the paper it's on, because all I can say, Brian, is I'm really, really happy to see you go. I've learned that you're not a man of good character, much less integrity. Jared, I want to wish you all the best. I'm hoping and praying for all the best for you and our city. You must have been bullied as a kid, because that's exactly the character that you demonstrate and show to so many people. So I just wanted to say that I'm glad to see you go.
Thank you, Mr. Carnes. We will close the visitor's section and move on to our first readings.
First reading Council Bill Number 2023-22, An Ordnance of the Council of the City of Nixa, amending Chapter 2 of the Nixa City Code by modifying Section 2-80 and adding a new article to establish procedures related to the sunshine law.
Good evening, Mayor Steele, members of council. I'm before you this evening to speak on Council Bill 2023-22, which, as the title indicates, is related to the state's sunshine law. The sunshine law is the state's open meetings and open records law, and the bill before you this evening is focused on the records portion of that law. And so what the bill is going to be focusing on is basically providing the authority for the city's current practices when it comes to fulfilling open records requests. Currently, the city has a couple of resolutions on this topic that we're adhering to, and this would place that authority within the city code, giving it the force and effect of law, while also updating it to address a few things. And so, some of the key elements of the bill before you this evening, and I've mentioned this one, it will formalize the city's current records retention, destruction policy in open records requests. Currently, when we have records that have met destruction, a resolution is brought to the council when those records retention schedules have been met. That's good practice. This makes that a legal requirement going forward. The bill also designates the city clerk and the chief of police as records custodians. The city clerk is the records custodian for all city records. The chief of police, under the sunshine law, there's a certain category of records that relate to law enforcement that are handled a little bit differently. This ordinance, if approved, would designate the chief as a records custodian for those records that fall under that section of state law. Importantly, it also provides authority for the city to charge fees to defray the costs on the general public for fulfilling records requests. There's authority to do that in the law. This would make that have local authority behind it. And finally, it also provides a penalty provision, which is something we don't have right now, where if there is something that is closed under the sunshine law, that now there could be penalties that attach to employees or elected officials if they were to divulge records that are otherwise considered closed. And really, I view this item as more of a housekeeping measure, where we are largely codifying the city's current practice, just to put it on a more firmer legal foundation going forward. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have about this item.
So I know you said there's some differences in the police versus everything else. Is there a reason that the chief would be the one responsible for fulfilling those requests versus, on this side, it's not the city administrator, it's the city clerk?
There's a couple of reasons. One, under the general sunshine law, the non-law enforcement records portion, closure is not mandatory, okay? The council has the authority to open certain records when they choose to do so. In the law enforcement side, those records are mandated to be closed. They cannot be open until certain thresholds are met. That's the first reason. The second reason is the chief already has, in his protocols, a open records request policy. And so this ordinance just would give that policy authority in law now, so that the chief does have authority to administer the open records requests that are submitted for those records that fall under that law enforcement exemption.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any questions, Mr. Lucas?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
And we will open up the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak to this item, they can do so at this time.
I'm the only one, right? Just wondering, what would like a fee schedule look like? Since there is no fee schedule in here, what would a fee schedule look like for, let's just say, a general email dump for a week, or something like that? Is there a per-page, or is there a per-email standard that will be created? Is there something that the state's already mandated?
Do you want me to answer that?
Yeah.
Any ideas?
So the code right now gives us the authority to be able to charge per hour for the lowest-paid employee that can do the job. So currently, we will charge 14 an hour to be able to process that. And then if there's any time to review those emails, which there would be, we would charge per hour for that, which would be 14.
And that's for like redacting and all of that?
So we can't charge for redacting time, we can charge for review time. So we would, there would be no charge for redacting if there was redacting that needed to be done.
Okay, and is there like a standard for how fast somebody has to read or anything like that?
So we have to provide you an estimate for how quickly it can be done.
Okay.
And then if it's not done within that timeframe, we have to be able to provide a reasonable cause for it not being done.
I'm only asking because people have actually tried, you know, open records requests with schools and stuff like that, and I think Ozark got slapped because they wanted to charge somebody thousands of dollars for a simple request for salaries. They wanted to charge, I think it was a couple thousand dollars, you know, just to disclose people's salaries in the school district or something like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. We'll leave the public hearing open. And close the public hearing. Any further questions or discussion? Anything else from staff? Sorry.
Just for the record, in case there's questions, the portion of the fees is in the ordinance. It's at Section 2-164 that appears on line 109 of the bill.
All right, we'll move on to the second readings.
Second reading Council Bill Number 2023-16, An Ordnance of the Council of the City of Nixa, authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with Missouri Public Utility Alliance Resource Services Commission for certain materials and services that may be requested in the future.
Good evening, mayor and council. This master services agreement with MPUA, it acts as a governing agreement that we would use in the event that we would utilize MPUA for any services, whether that be obtaining materials or any work-type services utilizing maybe one of their technicians or that type of thing on something here. This would be the governing agreement, and then within this agreement, it outlines where we would use work orders for any specific project. So as an example, if we wanted to have an inspection on some SF-6 breakers at the substation, and they have the expertise to do that, they would provide us a work order with the scope of services, or we would work out together what that scope of services is, and they'd provide us a cost for that. That would be the cost that would be tied to this agreement. And this agreement, of course, has all of the governing effects as far as liability, insurance, those types of things, and you know, how payments are made and that type of thing. So this agreement itself doesn't have any costs associated with it. It will be any subwork underneath that. And at this time, we really don't have anything out there. We're just putting this in place in case we were to need it in the future. So... And the other thing that I wanted to mention, there's no term length on this. It has no term at all, so we can get out of it anytime we want, or, like I said, as long as we don't have any work orders, we don't even use it. So it just lays there. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you, Doug. And we will open up the public hearing on this item. Close the public hearing. Any further questions or discussion? Mr. Lucas?
I'm good.
All right, we will accept a motion to approve.
So made.
Roll call, please.
Sean Lucas.
Yes.
Jared Giddens.
Yes.
Aaron Peterson.
Yes.
Darlene Graham.
Yes.
Matt Ogden.
Yes.
Seth Balog.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Second reading Council Bill Number 2023-17, An Ordnance of the Council of the City of Nixa, amending the 2023 annual budget to appropriate funds for the wastewater collection, inflow, and infiltration reduction program.
Good evening, mayor and council. The ordinance in front of you tonight is a request to provide a budget amendment to the wastewater collection budget to reestablish funding that was intended for the 2023 budget. This is a yearly budget item that is budgeted for our inflow and infiltration program, which is manhole and sewer line lining program to ensure that groundwater is kept out of the system. In 2022, monies were budgeted for work to be done on several manhole lining projects, as well as some sewer line lining projects. The work was done within the 2022 budget year in the fall of last year, however, the invoice did not get received by the city until after the close of the '22 budget. So the monies for the 2022 program were paid out of the '23 budget. The request before you tonight is to reestablish that funding that was identified in the 2023 budget in the amount of $225,000 to allow for the city to continue the INI program in this budget year. The funds this year will be utilized to do approximately 900 vertical feet of manhole lining, which the city staff has identified 137 manholes that would be utilized with this funding to provide that polymer lining necessary to keep that groundwater from infiltrating our sewer system. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have regarding the request.
Any questions? Thank you, Travis.
Thank you.
And we will open up the public hearing on this item. And close the public hearing. Any other questions or discussion? Mr. Lucas?
Good.
Any other questions? Nope. Accept a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Jared Giddens?
Yes.
Aaron Peterson?
Yes.
Darlene Graham?
Yes.
Matt Ogden?
Yes.
Seth Baylog?
Yes.
Sean Lucas?
Yes.
Second reading Council Bill number 2023-18, an ordinance of the council of the city of Nixa, authorizing the city administrator to execute an agreement with Enterprise Developments LLC to warrant completion of certain public works, public improvements.
This is a request that has been submitted to you by the developer of Copperleaf Phase Six subdivision, requesting an extended warranty for some work that was conducted at the subdivision that did not meet the city criteria for establishment of road infrastructure. Specifically, as a recap of our discussion from March 27th, within the Copperleaf subdivision, there's an approximate 500-foot stretch of roadway that was installed absent necessary inspections and absent compliance with our approved technical specifications requirements for roadway construction. Specifically, the subgrade had failed several tests the week that the, the roadway was paved. The developer moved forward with paving of the roadway absent an approved inspection from city staff. Subsequent to that, the developer of Copperleaf has provided you with the language in front of you to establish a, a request for an extended warranty period for that section of roadway, specifically to increase the warranty from our typical one-year period to a five-year period. In addition to the warranty requirements that are established in the ordinance, the developer has offered a letter of credit in to a, a amount of $110,147.21, which is the estimated cost for removal and replacement of the subgrade and asphalt, and also includes a 4% year-over-year escalator necessary to accommodate typical inflation, inflationary increases over that five-year period. Following the discussion, or the presentation at the March 27 meeting, there was a, a wealth of discussion from council regarding the proposal and what we wanted to do moving forward. From staff's understanding of those, of that discussion, there was basically two main themes that, that boiled to the surface. One was whether or not the proposal that has been submitted by the developer includes enough of a punishment for the lack of compliance with the adopted regulations. And two, whether or not this proposal would incite future developers to ignore the city regulations in lieu of just providing an extended warranty. From those discussions, staff has presented with you kind of three options that fall within those two themes that we kind of identified from that meeting. Obviously, these are not the only three options available. We were just wanting to provide you with a couple options to kind of start discussion as we move forward on how to proceed with this, with this proposal from the developer of Copperleaf. Drew's put up on screen those three items that staff has identified. Number one, the request could be denied as presented. If this were to occur, the developer would be required to remove and replace the roadway in compliance with city adopted procedures within the technical specifications. So the roadway would not be accepted, and the final plat would not be filed until that roadway was removed and installed per city code. Number two, the request could be modified to require a cash escrow in lieu of the letter of credit to provide some form, or to provide greater assurance that the funds would be available if needed within that five-year warranty period. This would also provide a, a form of punishment to hopefully discourage others from utilizing this, this warranty process in the future, or requesting it in the future. And number three, a modification of the agreement could be made to extend the warranty period from five years to 10 years. This could be coupled with a, with a combination of any of the uses as, for a cash escrow that were identified before, either the letter of credit that's being proposed, or an actual cash escrow with the city. From there, staff is open to, to answer any questions you have. Again, this is not a proposal from staff. This is a proposal from the developer. The language was received by, by the city. Mr. Woodman, our attorney and staff, we've reviewed it, and we are offering it to you the version that we consider, that provides the most reasonable protections for the city.
Was there a reason at the time that they decided not to wait to have another inspection done after failing twice?
I cannot answer that. No, they, they failed the inspection twice that week. On Friday, they requested to be able to pave the road. They were told they could not because we did not have a failed inspection, and that we needed to provide another proof rolling of the subgrade on Monday. That evening, we received an email that they were, they were not going to comply with that, and they were going to pave the road anyway. Subsequent to that, they did pave the road, absent the necessary inspections.
How long after the second failed test was it until they paved? Do you know? For an estimated time?
The following day.
It was the very next day?
Yeah, they failed twice that week.
The next morning?
Right.
So they were inspected twice during the same week? So it wasn't a delay? Like, again, trying to get to, not a delay on our, on our part of making them wait a week for another test?
Correct. No, no.
We tested it multiple times that same week.
We tested it two times that week through our proof rolling process. It failed both times, and they decided to move forward, absent us doing the third test and subsequent tests, until we had a proof roll that passed the necessary inspection.
So what happens if we choose number one?
They rip it out and repave it?
Yes, they would have to remove the asphalt, redo the subgrade to meet our specifications, and reinstall the asphalt. At that point, there would be no need for an extended warranty, because it would be done in compliance with our adopted regulations.
Okay, that's our one.
Do we have any fines for them not being, being compliant?
No, no. That was that punishment portion that we were talking about. Right now, they're offering an extended warranty and a letter of credit in the amount that has been predetermined that would, it would cost to remove and replace that road, that 500-foot section. But there's been no punitive damage or, or punishment in addition to that.
We probably wouldn't have anything like that. Really, the ultimate remedy is we, the city can't accept the subdivision until it's brought up to code, more or less. So they won't be able to transfer lots under the statute until it's brought up to code.
Had you contacted the developer regarding either of the second two options? And if they, would they be interested in doing those?
No, we have not, because again, that was just staff's offer to stimulate discussion. It was, since because it was not a, an offer, a recommendation from city council, we did not want to provide any, any predetermined conditions.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Travis.
Thank you.
And we will open up the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak to this item. And we will close the public hearing. Begin our discussions.
So is there anyone here from that company?
Don't think so.
No? Okay. Yep. So I was actually, and honestly, Mr. Lee might be able to actually help with this, but I was reading an article in the journal a, a week or so ago, and during the housing boom in Springfield, they, you know, you kind of lose track of, of everything in your inspections and code and all that stuff. And right now, they're, like I saw something that they had created another group that's going around and looking at different violations, and in three years, they found over 18,000. And I think in a time where you have exponential growth, letting something like this go is going to hurt you a lot in the long run. Especially if it was, I mean, failing twice in one week and then just paving the next day on something that's going to have trash trucks. And, I mean, and that's once the development is over. We still have all of the other trucks that are going to be coming in throughout the development. How many lots do you, I mean, that's a random, off-the-top-of-your-head question. How many lots are there to be developed? Probably should have asked that earlier.
Within the area in question, this 500 feet, there are 14 lots that, that front this 500-foot stretch of road. The entire Phase Six, there's, there's approximately 60. But this specific section that, that we're, we're under discussion about, there's 14 lots.
I, I don't, I just don't, I don't know. When, when you fail twice and then you cover it up, it's kind of like when my mom told me to make my bed, and I never did it, and I just threw the comforter over it, it's done. It was made. I have a lot of concerns with that. And I also have a lot of concerns with the fact that it, we would just accept this and hope that in five years or less, that's when it would decide to break off and fall away. Because then at that part, then it's all on us to fix it. Correct?
Correct. Under the agreement, after the five-year period is met, then any failure of the road would be at the city cost to repair.
I think the, we talked about the five-year versus 10-year at the last meeting, that we expect the road bed to, the road bed to last 50 years, right? And the pay, the initial paving to last 20 or so, right?
Yes, yeah, 20, 25 years before the.
Five is seems like a fraction of what we would expect it to last.
Correct.
Versus the, versus either 10 or more.
Where I, where I struggle with is, he knew he failed twice.
Yeah.
He sent an email saying, "I don't care. I'm going to pave it anyways." To me, that's, I mean, why should we give him a way out? He chose not to obey our codes.
And I don't feel like this is uncommon for any municipality to request the road to be done correctly, if I'm not mistaken.
Oh, yes. We, we have, we have established criteria, and we have an inspection staff that their sole job is ensure that the public improvements that are being installed, that will ultimately be accepted, owned, operated, and maintained by the community, are done to our specific standards, so that we get the longevity that we anticipate out of, out of all of our public infrastructure.
And if a road was to, I mean, I don't even know what it would, I mean, just start to crack and stuff, how, I mean, what are the likely, what's the likelihood of that affecting the curves, the sidewalks, everything else? And was, was that built into that 100, or is that just the road?
No, that's just a removal and replacement of the asphalt and the subgrade, because the subgrade is what is in question, and the subgrade is the foundation, which all the, the asphalt and concrete improvements are placed on top of. So if it, if it fails, then of course, the concrete and asphalt on top of it fail.
Got you. Fair enough.
So we have four options as presented. We could vote on what was proposed by the developer and reviewed by staff, which would be the least punitive. That's not on here. But the second would be to extend it from five years to 10 years, which probably the developer would, I would assume, would agree with, agree to that without too much hesitation. The third would be the cash bond, which would, they would be, they would have to put that money, as a, they would have to pay, put cash into the bank, and, or some sort of securable note that would be money out of their pocket for that period of time, which would be a little more punitive. And then number one would be the most punitive, most costly to the developer to tear it out and rebuild it.
He's going to have to tear it out anyway, isn't he, to replace it?
No, he, he wants to warranty the work that he's done and say that it's good enough, and that it will last in his, his, originally five mi, five years.
Yeah.
So we're saying 10 or more years.
But we're already saying it's not up to code anyway.
Well, we don't know, because it was.
We don't know, because we didn't test it again.
It failed twice prior.
And there's no way to test it.
But there's, yeah, now there's, yeah.
And code is one thing, and what actually would work is another thing, right? So, yeah.
So if we vote no on this bill, then that just, yeah, so we vote, pretty much does.
Vote, vote yes if we just go with the five-year. Vote no would be that, or we could postpone it and have staff go back and ask for one of the two things in the middle, two or three item requests, two or three. If you didn't want to be, if you didn't want to make them tear it completely out.
Yeah, and if it was, if it wa, if this agreement was denied, then we would inform the developer that he would have to redo the subgrade prior to completion of the subdivision improvements. And that would have to be removed and replaced in compliance with our regulations before we could accept the dedicate, the offer of dedication for that public improvement.
So if we're not going, if we do decide not to approve this, don't we want to not make a motion and let this die due to lack of motion?
I think we would just vote no. Or yeah, we could, we could do lack of motion, too. Probably no would be better.
Ah.
It's a little more, a little more concrete as to.
The no would have a bigger.
Yeah. The no would have, would have the actual. Yeah.
Okay.
So I'd say vote yes, vote, vote no, or postpone. Does anyone want to postpone? Or is everybody good with just voting yes or no? Everybody good?
Yep.
All right. Any further discussion or questions? All right, I'll accept a motion to approve. It's called a motion to approve, but it's a motion to vote.
Yes.
You don't have to vote yes if you make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Aaron Peterson?
No.
Darlene Graham?
No.
Matt Ogden?
No.
Seth Baylog?
No.
Sean Lucas?
No.
Jared Giddens?
No.
Thank you very much.
Second reading Council Bill number 2023-19, an ordinance of the council of the city of Nixa, rezoning the real property generally located at the 1,400 block of West Mount Vernon Street, from a general commercial GC district to a high-density multifamily residential R3 district.
Mayor, Council, good evening. This is for the rezone of Lot 12 of the Auburn Heights subdivision. It's approximately 1.87 acres located in the 1,400 block of West Mount Vernon. It's currently zoned general commercial. Property owner has requested a rezone to R3, high-density multifamily. The surrounding land uses to the south is single-family structures on R1 property. To the west is a legal non-conforming, single-family home on general commercial property. To the east is general commercial property, which houses the, the Nixa Public School Score Building. And to the north is Highway 14. This property has immediate access to all Nixa utilities, but as we are well aware, this falls within the Oakmont Lift Station drainage basin, so there is a delay on that due to staff currently designing, or in the early phases of moving the lift station further down the, the valley to open up more areas for development. And also with the transformer issue, where we're still seeing approximately a two-year wait for transformers. This property does currently contain the, the stormwater detention basin that handles the stormwater from the single-family subdivision to the south, and also this property in question. It does flow into MoDOT's right-of-way on the south side of Highway 14, and then flows west, and then eventually goes under the road to the north side. The stormwater does, is released at the same volume pre-development. That is the purpose of the detention basin, so there's no additional water flowing out of this site versus pre, versus post-development. This property, this item was read to the Planning and Zoning Commission in February of this year. There were many neighbor, concerned neighbors that had many, a variety of concerns. The property owner did meet with them after the meeting, and they seemed to be on board with his proposal. The Planning and Zoning Commission did vote four to one to recommend approval to city council. This item was also read in front of city council in February, where we received a three-to-one yes vote, but it requires four votes from council to recommend approval. So council members did recommend that this come back. And staff is recommending approval based on the fact that this piece of property is shown on the future land use map as being, should be zoned as high-density multifamily. If you have any questions, I'm available.
Any questions? Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
And we will open up the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak to this item.
Yep, yep.
Yep.
You're Brenda?
Yes.
Just state your name into the microphone and.
All right, my name is Brenda Barber, and I'm here representing my father, who is in attendance. He's Bob Barber. And when the gentleman spoke about the, well, my father's concerned about stormwater. And when the gentleman spoke about the stormwater running under State Highway 14 north, it runs onto my father's land. And it, it continues to go north, and then it cuts to the west, goes for 3,300 yards, and then goes back south again under State Highway 14. But he would prefer that the rezoning not take place, because high density may make even more water come under there, unless the, the stormwater stays on the south side of 14. That's what he would really like, because stormwater runs from that score school, runs down. down that hill, and then comes over to his land. And he said the pipe there, under the State Highway, has been there his whole life, and he's 91, so it's been there a long time. So, if you have any questions, though, we're, we're both here.
Thank you very much.
All right.
And we'll leave up in the public hearing.
My name's Derek Lee, and, um, I own the property, and I, and I was gonna develop it as, uh, townhomes. And if this is allowed to go forward, it will have significantly less impervious area than what it's currently zoned for, which will reduce the amount of stormwater if you approve this. Um, the townhomes we're looking at will have grass backyards, and will have less impervious area, um, than what it's currently allowed to have. In the commercial zoning, we're allowed to have more impervious area, which is more runoff. And I also just wanted to say thank you for hearing this again. I appreciate you guys doing that. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions, Mr. Lee? Thank you, Mr. Lee. And we'll leave up in the public hearing.
It's been a while, um, since this first came up. Will, will this development have, uh, ingress and egress from 14? Or will it have a parking lot behind it, off of a side street or something like that?
Uh, it has a shared egress, um, off of 14 that's designated by MoDOT, so it's between it and the next piece of property over. They share one entrance into it.
Okay.
And anyone else? And we'll close the public hearing. Any other questions or discussion? Or comments from staff?
May I ask some more questions?
Sure. No, that's okay, no.
The planning and zoning gentleman did talk about a future pro, or something in the future that may get all that water on the south side of the highway, of the highway?
Well, he was talking about, um, the future property use maps. We have a map that says things that are on the edge of town, what should they, what, what do we think they should be? So most things along Highway 14 are designated to be commercial or high-density residential. Uh, Mr. Lee was saying that he's, it's currently zoned commercial, so they could build a strip center or a convenience store, that would just be all one parking lot, which would increase the water that goes to your father's property. But, um, it, he's gonna do townhomes, which will have less, which have more grass and less impervious surface, um, so that there won't be that much. There, there's also a retention ditch on that, on Mr. Lee's property now, that is designed to catch all the extra water and just keep the water flowed the same as it goes across the highway. There's nothing at this point we can really do about it going across the highway, that's what it's always done, right? So-
It, it is, but there's, the city has no plans to try to keep it all on the south side in the future.
Um, at some point, Highway 14 would be developed out farther that way, and would have curb and guttering like you see in the city, uh, but probably not until that point, no.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions or discussion? All right, accept a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Darlene Graham.
Yes.
Matt Ogden.
Yes.
Seth Baylog.
No.
Sean Lucas.
Yes.
Jared Gittens.
Yes.
Aaron Peterson.
Yes.
All right.
Second reading Council Bill number 2023-20, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Nixa, amending Chapter 22, Article 4, of Section 22-310 of the Nixa City Code to amend the implementation date for the energy cost adjustments applied to the city electric rates.
This energy cost adjustment change that I'm proposing is actually part of the latest electric rate ordinance. Currently, the ordinance has February as the beginning month for any adopted energy cost adjustment, uh, for changes in purchase, purchase power costs. Because the time lag that's necessary for staff to accurately provide the information for Council's consideration of, of that ECA, uh, we're requesting implementation month begin with April and run through March of the next year. Uh, this change is on page 10 of that ordinance, which is in your packet. Uh, no other changes are being proposed, uh, by this Council Bill, so there's no other change in the electric rate, or any of the other ordinance components is just strictly moving from the February month to the April month, provided there is an ECA. And in this particular case, there is, you passed that resolution at the last meeting, so, um, staff recommends passage. I'm available if you have any other questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Doug. And we will open up the public hearing on this item.
Boy, there's a lot to talk about, um-
Make sure you say your names, so I can-
Oh, my name's Ron Sanders, yeah. I live here in Nixa, so everybody knows. Um, is this gonna be so that the rate changes don't happen until after the April elections? Or, or will we actually have everything happen before the elections?
Cool. Uh, I'm not sure, was there an exact date in there?
The idea is that we would bring, if we had an ECA adjustment, we'd bring that to you in March.
Okay.
For April buildings.
Cool. Thank you, Mr. Sanders. And we'll leave up in the public hearing. Close the public hearing. Any other questions or discussion? I'll accept a motion to approve.
So made.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Matt Ogden.
Yes.
Seth Baylog.
Yes.
Sean Lucas.
Yes.
Jared Gittens.
Yes.
Aaron Peterson.
Yes.
Darlene Graham.
Yes.
Yes.
And one more.
Second reading Council Bill number 2023-21, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Nixa, authorizing the execution of several agreements related to certain solar power electric generating facility.
One more time. Um, we first had first reading on this, of course, at your last meeting, and it authorizes the mayor to execute three agreements associated with the Nixa Solar Farm, uh, if it were to be purchased by the Missouri Electric Commission. I've added some, or I've, I'm gonna speak a little bit more on some requested information that you asked for at the last meeting, and not completely go through everything, although please don't hesitate to ask any questions. Uh, I will go back to recap that there, there are three different agreements. One would be a termination agreement, which basically terminates the agreement with Nixa Solar LLC, which is the current agreement. Um, one is a, is an, we call it an IA agreement, it's an interconnection and operations agreement, which basically governs connection points and how that connection point is operated for the transfer of power. Uh, the third agreement is the actual power purchase agreement, and that is the one that outlines, um, payment terms, length, cost, all of those types of things, liability. And so that was what we've kinda gone through in some more, in some detail, um, at the last meeting, particularly that there are some unknown costs associated with, uh, the ending of the project and closing out the project, which, at this point, the contract goes through 2047, but the, the project could go on way past that, where there could be capital investments, and, uh, it could continue to be a solar farm past that. So, um, that's the basis of that agreement itself. The other item that we talked about, that I didn't have a lot of information on, and I've looked at a lot closer, uh, happened to do with what I call SRECs. And they're basically solar renewable energy credits. And what, what those are, um, let me go through, sorry, I've got it written here. They're typically, that what they are is they're, they're credits for energy that typically you would see a, a commercial or an industrial business purchase to show that they are u, using renewable energy. So, we produce so many megawatt, or megawatt-hours of power, and that is renewable energy. Now, a company may not, a company may have internal com, internal policies where they want to utilize green power. One of the things they can do is, because they don't have access to it, they can purchase the renewable energy credits to show that they're actually using renewable energy. It's, it's all on paper, I'm sorry, but that's the way the market works. In this particular case, um, one megawatt hour of power out of the solar farm equals one rec, or one renewable energy credit. In the case of this solar farm, nameplate, it, it'll produce around 15,000 a year. Uh, in 2022, it actually produced 14,203. That's gonna vary every year, depending on cloud cover, storms, those types of things, how many sunny days you have. But it's, it's gonna be pretty close to right around that number. What we didn't, what we don't have today, that we would have under this new agreement, is that we would, these cred, these energy credits would go back towards the project itself. In other words, it would come back in our favor to pay things off sooner, thus, we would be in profit sooner in the contract than we would have been before. So, the other thing that is in the air is how much you can get for these. Um, one of the quotes that I received that's in your memo is roughly $3 to $10 per rec, annually, for those. So, that came from a consultant in the market that I was talking to last week. I also heard later today, thank you, Matt, um, that there are some sold locally for $18. So it's all over the place. In the Midwest, we're, we're fairly saturated with renewable energy. There's a lot of wind and a lot of solar in the, in the middle part of the country. On the coast, there isn't a lot. And of course, along the coast, you have a lot of states or places where they haven't enacted, enacted their own environmental caps, you know, for, uh, for carbon release. So, some of those places on the coast have actually locked up contracts, and some of those are very high. Some of them go for $40 to upwards of $300. Now, $300 is way out there, but they actually, there are some out there that actually are sold for that. Uh, but getting into the $40 and $50 range on the coast is pretty common. Now, what we'll see here is probably less, however, as time goes on, we expect that will probably increase, because there'll become more and more of that. More, more states, more places are gonna enact these, these, uh, policies, I guess, for, for lack of a better term. And so, but what I didn't do is, I'm not showing basically any, I'm not, I, I provided some information dollar amount-wise in the spreadsheet I gave you, but I'm not, I'm not gonna sit here and sell this based on the energy credits, because we just don't know what that number's gonna be. If we, if we made $30,000, you know, a year on it, it would make a pretty good-sized difference in the contract. If you made 100,000, obviously, it's gonna be quite a bit more than that. Without using any of the energy credits, I still see that, over the life of this contract through 2047, it's about a $2.7 million savings over what we would have done on the other, with the other contract. And, and part of that has to do is, you get it paid off sooner, or you get it paid off and you still have some contract after the fact, and so, uh, that's where some of that additional savings is gonna come in. Now, that's on top of what we were already saving, uh, when we entered the agreement in 2017, because we're, we're bypassing the transmission system. So we have some savings there already. So, I know that's a lot of information, so I just, I'll leave it for you to ask me any questions.
Any questions?
We can go from there.
No, I, I will say, um, in the past week, I've done lots of columning, and, um, more I'm digging is, I think is, it looks like a pretty good deal for us, long-term, so.
All right, thank you, Doug.
Yes.
And we will open up the public hearing. And we will close the public hearing. Any further questions or discussion?
I mean, Matt, with your research, I think yours might have came up the same as mine, is the only other option that would be, I guess comparable or better, would be is if we bought the solar farm. Which, that's a lot of money, and-
Yeah.
Right.
That's, that's a negative for-
Right, besides the initial cost of us buying, the pro to MPU A owning it, we have that partnership still, yeah.
Okay.
So, um, like I said.
Yeah, the other, the other option would be, we could keep the contract we currently have. They are, they, even if they bought it, they'd still be tied into the contract that we originally have, which, we wouldn't save the money long-term. It would be, we wouldn't spend a little bit more money short-term, but we would save more money long-term.
Correct.
So. Or we would lose money long-term, if we-
Yeah.
Didn't get the new contract. Anything else?
Nope.
All right, I will accept a motion to approve.
So made.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Seth Baylog.
Yes.
Sean Lucas.
Yes.
Jared Gittens.
Yes.
Aaron Peterson.
Yes.
Darlene Graham.
Yes.
Matt Ogden.
Yes.
All right, move on to the resolution section.
Resolution number 2023-17, a resolution of the Council of the City of Nixa, authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with DynaTuff Corporation for payment kiosk.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is, um, a resolution to authorize City Administrator Lyles to enter into a contract with DynaTouch for utility billing and payment kiosks. As you recall, we put this into the 2023 capital budget, and this is just a terms and conditions contract, um, spelling out everything that we are agreeing to with this company. Um, these, we will be purchasing three. We plan on putting, um, one here at City Hall, one at Utility Billing Office, and one at the park, at the X Center, so customers can pay their bill at their convenience after hours. It will take cash and checks and credit cards. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about it.
Are they located, are they located inside the building or outside the building?
We can do outside.
Okay, outside, okay.
That's one of, um, whenever we end up moving utility billing over here, it will allow us to do outside payments, so that, because we won't have a drive-through, uh, at City Hall. So we'll be positioning that kiosk from the outside of the building for, for convenience.
Oh, you said two kiosks, one for City Hall and one for-
Well, like, one maybe in this lobby, or-
No, we'll actually end up probably doing, what we're talking about doing is doing one here at Utility Billing when it comes over here, one at the X Center, and then one somewhere else in the city. We were looking at even potentially, uh, maybe a convenience store, or someone that we can come to an agreement with.
Okay.
Yep. We were, and the confusion is, we were gonna purchase four, uh, but with the move of city utility, or I'm sorry, utility billing over here, we backed that purchase down to three, so that's, that's where the confusion is.
Perfect.
Yep.
Have we not gotten into the logistics of where it might be here, as far as-
We haven't nailed any of that down yet, really.
Okay.
Whenever we, um, have the architect look at our building and the remodel, that's when we'll decide exactly where that's gonna fit at, here at the building.
Okay.
Yep.
Cool. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Jennifer. And we will open up the public hearing. And we will close the public hearing. Any other questions and/or discussion?
And, uh, one other. Jennifer, this, this will be tied into our new software as well, correct?
Yes, it, um, it's compatible with Invoice Cloud, which is our new payment processor, which is our, is compatible with our new software. So it's all, they're all inter, interconnected, so these won't be able to be used until we do that conversion in June.
Okay.
But it's a 12-to-16-week lead time, so they wouldn't be ready before then anyway, likely.
And I've thought of some more questions.
No.
And it takes cash?
Cash, checks, credit cards, yes.
Bitcoin, I thought Bitcoin.
Is there a camera built into it? Is...
I believe there is a camera, yes. On the cash part of it, it doesn't dispense cash back out, it just credits their account. If there's, you know, if their bill is $350.25 and they pay 355, it will just credit that change, there's no change. If we, if we decide to put a kiosk off-site somewhere, we will, we will probably engage in armored car service to pick the cash up. We don't want our city staff, you know, out, away from a city building transporting cash, so we would probably engage in armored car service for that.
Okay. Will we, I mean, do we have, I mean, obviously, since we don't know where we're putting it yet, as far as other security side of that, I mean, because I'm just thinking someone sitting there sliding $20 bills into something, that'd be an easy target. I mean, just same as someone getting $20 bills out of an ATM, as far as the, we just put it over at the PD. There you go.
Do they have a option of buying one that actually goes in the wall so that you actually get the money out from inside?
They do. Yep, there are freestanding ones, and then there are ones that are built into the wall. These are the freestanding ones.
Have we priced for us like the one here with the remodel, to do one that's built in, so you drive up and you can...
The idea is that, the reason we went the standalone is so they can drive up to it. We're wanting to design it in a way that they can drive up and do it from their car instead of actually getting out and walking up to it, which would be less secure. But we could do that if you'd like us to look into that. But that's, that was the thought process of doing the standalone, that, so you could drive up, much like a drive-through.
Yeah. There's probably nowhere right here to drive right next to the building, is there?
I'm sorry?
There's probably nowhere right here you can drive right next to the building.
Well, I mean, the way they work though, you could probably put it on the sidewalk or something.
On the curb, yeah. Put it on the sidewalk.
Or in the parking lot at the police station.
Yep.
Joe's like, he's getting serious.
I had a question to go along with the off-site one. When you talked about armored car services, instead of having armored cars, is there a way to program it where maybe that, that particular kiosk can only take credit card payment or where there's no cash involved with that machine at all?
Yes, they can be configured however you want to set them up. They just have the capability of taking cash if you want them to.
The only downfall, adding confusion to, it's like, yeah.
It could be that this machine only accepts these payments on, on the kiosk. We could have it...
Yeah.
Jennifer, do you know if they have any sort of skimming protections against identity theft or securing anybody's credit card transactions?
I'm not sure about the technical specifications of that with, with DynaTouch, but I don't know specifically. I can ask if they have something in place.
That's just, it's a common cybersecurity issue that...
Right.
Yeah, I mean, they're generic, they're generic retailer of kiosks. I assume they have a...
Yeah, I mean, just a degree to which it's checked.
All the correct things, yep.
Well, yeah, maybe they have to go out and check the machines.
Oh, you're talking like, like the Swiper thing, like...
Yeah, I mean, that happens at gas pumps all the time and they're really easy to install, and oftentimes they check them very frequently to make sure they're not there.
That may be something that we would have our staff trained to review as well, so that when we go out to the, because the ones here, I assume you wouldn't have the armored car, you just, one of our staff will go out and open them up. Any other questions? Good question, though.
Yes.
All right. Where was I? Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Any other questions? All right, accept a motion to approve.
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. All right. Anything else? Last thing on the agenda, anything else from staff?
Just a reminder of the workshop.
Do you have any questions or any details?
Yeah. Don't contact me. Anything else from council?
I have something. Had a guy contact me about the fact that his trash service has not been picked up on a regular basis. Matter of fact, last week was another time. He says he's had eight to 10 times that it wasn't picked up, and even on their street, it hasn't been picked up, and he's tried to call Republic Services and said the bill stays the same and they never get anything done, so he was hoping that maybe he could get some resolution or what he could do to get them a little bit more in the ball to do this.
If you could, if you could send me the contact information and address, I'll check into that.
Okay.
I think you know the contact information and the address.
Okay, I'll forward it to you. I'll try to forward it to you. Let me put it that way.
Mayor, I apologize, there's one more thing for, in the back of the room here.
Oh, where's that? Oh, okay. This voice of God is coming toward us.
I was checking everybody. For the next council meeting, you guys will, will have a, a reception for you and for the incoming elected officials before the next council meeting, so at 6 o'clock in the lobby, the doors will be open, there will be some refreshments, and we'll have a little ceremony where we'll put, add you to the wall of the past mayors of the city, and we'll say some nice words, and then, and you'll be able to, folks from the public will be able to come in and meet with you before, as you're leaving, and also to meet and greet with the oncoming council, council members and the new mayor.
All right. You gonna have some nice words prepared for me, Ron?
Just one other quick mention is the prescription drug take-back day, April 22nd, that's Saturday, it'd be at Alps Pharmacy over in the Crimson Plaza from 9:00 AM, no, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Very good. I got some. All right, nothing else? One last time, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.